For your viewing pleasure, this broadcast of the Municipal Council Meeting of Alpena is made possible by the funding provided by the City of Alpena. Thank you for your generosity.
Call the roll, please.
Hess.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Nielsen.
Here.
Noak is absent, and Walagora?
Here. Thank you. Please rise for the mic.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice pro.
Any modifications to the agenda this evening? Approval of the minutes for regular session of April 2, 2018. Any issues or changes? Citizens appearing before council on agenda and non-agenda items are allowed five minutes each to address your concerns. This is the only time during tonight's council meeting that you'll be allowed to address council, so please come to the podium and state your name and address for our records.
My name is Jim DeRocher. I live in Alpena, Chisholm Street. I have a couple of questions. This refers back to the March for Our Lives that we had, I think it was in the 28th of There was a lot of intimidation that went on with the open carry group that was there. I'm not against the Second Amendment. I got long guns and... But, I looked this up, and it says in Michigan it's legal for a person to carry a firearm in public as long as the person is carrying the firearm with lawful intent and the firearm is not concealed. So I want to know what lawful intent is. There's no... You look out, there's no... Michigan has no laws. So my question is, can the city of Alpena have an ordinance? You know, who determines what's lawful and what's unlawful? If a person's carrying a gun to intimidate somebody, to scare somebody, or threaten them, I would assume that's unlawful intent. So, you know, so there's a line here that when this happens, you know, I've got nothing against their right to speak, but when you have the police department that comes down there, they know something could happen, that's an unlawful intent at carrying a gun. I don't care what anybody says. So my question is, can somebody find out what is lawful intent and what is unlawful intent, even if it's just for the city of Alpena? And is it possible to have a city ordinance made that explains that? That saves problems down the line.
I understand. I understand your question. I want to... And I don't like to do this, just so you know. Public comment, I don't like to do this, but just because we've had some questions about this, would you like to make a statement on that now?
Yeah. There is a state statute that it doesn't specifically define what awful... What unlawful intent is, but it's commonly referred to as "go armed with." So you can't go armed with a weapon, whether that be a dirk, dagger, stiletto, firearm, knife, with unlawful intent. Unfortunately, unlawful intent's not so easy to determine just in the way that somebody might be carrying a weapon. So Michigan's open carry law allows you to carry it. We have a city ordinance as well that says you can't brandish a firearm. There's no real good definition for "brandish." There are a couple definitions, obviously, that are easy to understand from a common sense standpoint. If you're walking down the middle of Chisholm Street like this with your weapon, that's going to be considered brandishing. You know, on your hip, no. Somewhere in between, it's, you know, unless somebody tells you why they're carrying it or makes some comment that would lead you to believe that they're threatening you with the weapon, it's not so easy to tell what they're intending to do.
Right. They assume the march was against the Second Amendment, and I don't think anybody I helped organize, I don't think anybody was against the Second Amendment at all.
So...
So you can't assume what somebody's doing is against them. And if they can carry weapons against people that don't believe like they believe, we've got a problem.
Okay. And I just want to make sure you understand that the reason why we don't ordinarily do that is because I can't let the meeting become a debate.
Okay.
You ask your question, and that's our best answer right there to your question.
Okay. That's all I need.
And I appreciate it. I just want to make sure we don't get into a debate situation.
Right. And is it possible to have a city ordinance?
We do have a city ordinance that doesn't allow you to brandish a firearm inside the city, or even a replica firearm. So even if you've got a BB pistol, if you're brandishing it, that's still a violation of the ordinance. So it's not a firearm per se, but it can be a knife, it can be any weapon, anything that you brandish with unlawful intent. That's already covered in the city ordinance and under state law as well. There's a state statute that makes it a five-year felony to go armed with a weapon.
Okay. That's all I... Thank you. You did a nice job clearing out the smell.
Thank you. Not everybody thinks so.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. On the heels of the March for Our Lives event that gathered more than 200 people here in Alpena on March 24, I'm here just to share some thoughts on how we discuss the appeal for change and the way that gun ownership is regulated, and it might help us to hash out some of those definitions as well going forward. In doing so, I have some anecdotes that demonstrate the difficulty of the topic because it really intersects with some contentious social issues like class and race. I'll also share some promising ideas that are already in work for how we can move forward and work toward finding common ground that unites us all. Three days before the march, I received a message from a woman who planned to join us at the event with her daughter. She shared with me the text of a back-and-forth that she'd had with the organizer of a group called the Friends of Liberty. This group was promoting and planning a march to take place alongside ours. I immediately got in touch with our other organizers, Jim Schaefer, met with the local police chief, and we are all eternally grateful for the police presence that kept the march peaceful and without incidents. I checked out the Friends of Liberty Facebook event listing, which read, "The media and elites are encouraging people to protest against the Second Amendment rights." What stood out to me the most in their event description was the intersection of our perception with some class schism and guns. There's a belief that powerful, wealthy elites are responsible for this grassroots movement, and those elites are working against all Americans who fear losing their Second Amendment rights. Among those of us marching were teachers, pastors, social workers, students, retirees, stay-at-home moms, and gun owners, people from all walks of life. We were not being led by the media or elites, but rather by statistics and the alarming epidemic of mass shootings and gun-related deaths in schools, theaters, malls, churches, homes throughout this country, and we all just want our kids to be safe from gun violence. Right before the march, a group member posted a comment on Facebook that inaccurately associated the Friends of Liberty as one of two hate groups that the Southern Poverty Law Center had identified here in Alpena on their 2017 hate map. It was a mistake, and that wasn't discovered until it sent a ripple of fear out to those planning on attending, including myself and my family. My family moved here to Alpena from a small town in South Carolina. We lived there for the tragic church shooting where avowed white supremacist Dylann Roof murdered nine black parishioners, including their pastor, after they'd invited him into their Bible study. What followed that tragic mass shooting was a public outcry to remove the Confederate flag from the South Carolina State Capitol Building, as it was and is a symbol of racism and slavery and hate in this country. Fast forward to our relocation, living here in Alpena, and I field questions from my children about why the neighbor a few blocks away flies a Confederate flag on the back of his truck, and then when they begin attending junior high, why is it okay for a boy to wear a T-shirt with a Confederate flag printed on it? They ask me why they hear the children in the hallway using the N-word at school, and every day that I drop my girls off, I pray that they don't have a run-in with the young man that called their Indian friend in class, made the N-word on school grounds one day. He's the same young man that punched and drew blood from the face of another brave boy who came to her defense. If there are guns in that angry young man's home, I pray he doesn't have access to them and that he doesn't bring them to school, and I pray that he gets the love that all adolescent boys require to grow into kind men. Prayers alone, though, cannot guarantee that my kids will be safe at school. Judy Stillian shared with you all remarks that I made for the following march, expressing my own fears about attending. I believed at the time that the misinformation about the Friends of Liberty group was true because of our widespread and tragic history of racism and hate crimes that often end in gun violence in this country. Here and now, I'll go on record apologizing for the role that I played expressing my fear, but we can't ignore that racism is another issue that exists at the difficult intersection when we struggle with fear and civility in our discourse on guns. Our community is not alone in dealing with these difficult issues. There's good news, though. We are a unique community in that the work has already begun to establish civil discourse. There's a small army of folks here on the ground deliberate in their intent to get to know and to listen to those on the other side of this debate. I know this because I worked with them on a community conversation we had last fall on the controversial topic of immigration. We had moderators at four round tables of individuals who sat together to share a meal and listened to one another. Comments were timed, there were rules of engagement, no one felt judged or persuaded, and everyone could be honest. April 20 through the 28th has been named the National Week of Conversation by the Bridge Alliance Education Fund and Partners. Since we just found out about it, there's not time to organize another community conversation modeled after that one we had on immigration, but we would value your input, attendance, and participation in a larger conversation in the future where we poll in voices from both sides of this debate on gun legislation. How amazing would it be to receive an invitation from the mayor to attend a dinner and conversation on a topic on what you're passionate about and want to be heard? As the editor of the Alpena News stated in an editorial published just after the march, "We need to start somewhere." The folks I'm so fortunate to be able to work with on community conversations do not know the people on the other side of this debate. We need introductions to diminish the fear of the other. We need your leadership to help unite the people in our community, and I hope that this is one way we can make that happen. Thank you for your time. I have information on the National Week of Conversation. Again, there may might be time to organize anything. There isn't time for our group to organize anything, but I think it's great because it has these wonderful models of things that communities are doing across the country to really bridge the divide, and it's really helpful right now. I think we are divided, and we need help, and we're afraid of each other, and we don't even know who we are, but we're all in the same community, so it doesn't make a lot of sense.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for the time.
Christina, before you go, I'm sorry. Thank you, by the way, for coming, but you'll have to state your name and address for our records.
Oh, I'm sorry. Christina Gatachu, 4017 South Second Avenue.
Thank you.
Don Gilman, individual, 220 Sprepel Street, Alpena, Michigan. I was at the March for Our Lives. Matter of fact, I was the guy that had the misspelled sign that in this courtesy letter says a handful of men from the hate group that call themselves Friends of Liberty were there. I was there. I'm not a member of the Friends for Liberty. I didn't even... I never even heard about it until I met the guy that started it, Stephen F., at Chief Jeff's request in the morning because of the concern. You'd never know what's going to happen with one of these events. But anyway, it says I counted three. I guess I'd have been one of them. They heckled us, and one proudly displayed a sign with misspelled language. There was no heckling. The only heckling, and I was there the whole time, the only heckling that I remember... Now, there could have been some, because you know I don't hear that well. As we stood on the periphery of the group with, you know, when they got to the venue, I couldn't even hear everything everybody was saying. It was cold, windy, whatever, and we're just talking guy stuff, deer hunting, whatever. I was standing with the two guys that did open carry AR-15s, both 220-year Air Force veterans. I saw a couple of other guys, at least two, that I know for sure that were wearing pistols or revolvers, you know, all sides of their clothes where everybody could see them. Don't necessarily agree with it. They had flags in the barrels as a sign, that they, you know, whether they were trying to intimidate somebody intentionally, whether they were trying to say, "Hey, free speech, this is my right," I don't know what people think. But I do know, they heckled us, and one proudly displayed a sign with misspelled language is absolutely true. Untrue, I mean. I got there first. I didn't even see anybody else from, I guess you could call from the pro-Second Amendment. I did see Keith Titus, a good friend of mine. I've known him since the '60s. Went over and talked to him, and he saw my sign, and he just chuckled, and he said, "Well, I guess you're not here for our side." And I said, "I'm absolutely here for our side." I said, "Everybody is here for the children. Everybody is here for one reason: to keep the children safe. We differ on different ways to do it." I signed Duffy's petition, talked to Duffy, and we were there. I talked to Jim Johnson, and we were there, first time I'd really had a chance to speak to him. When the group met, Friends of Liberty, and I don't even know if they were all Friends of Liberty, I know that the guy from Friends of Liberty, Stephen, was there, and I said, "You know what? Don't even mix up with the people. Let them just go ahead across the bridge, give them a few feet, and we'll just walk behind them." Nobody heckled anybody. The only heckling was two ladies came running by trying to catch up the group. They were a little late, I guess. They're probably my age, and they just made a comment about you don't need a machine gun to hunt deer, or something like that. We chuckled to ourselves, and they went, and that was it. But, you know, there's some of the verbiage. I've been conscious for years about the intersection of gun culture and racism in Alpena. This sad bunch that showed up on Saturday demonstrated that ugly reality. I'm one of those sad bunches. I've been working for you guys for 18 years, and most of the people that are in that group know me, and I'm the one that posted the disclaimer about the hate group being Friends of Liberty. It's a Ku Klux Klan, and you may not have been there back in the day, but in 2015, somebody put some flyers on the north side. That's the one incident that I know about. And those type of things, you can look at the Southern Poverty Law Center, there's other people that track hate groups. They talk about Ku Klux Klan being one guy with, you know, a chicken with a bunch of flyers running around in the dark of the night, leaving them on people's porches to inspire fear. May live here, may not. He's gone. Never hear from him again. But, the trouble is, in this letter, it's this hate group is based in Alpena, and even the Southern Poverty Law Center, but the one that they do call out, is not based in Alpena. If it's based in Alpena, that means their headquarters is in Alpena, and it's an organ by their own admission. So, I stand here because I don't like to be berated by this letter, and I don't know Christina very well. I've met her a couple times in the neighborhood, dealing with loose raccoons over your friend's house, you know, and fixing up a dilapidated place, but there's a lot of... There's concern in the community about the direction that this is going. Everybody that was there, pro-Second Amendment, yes, somebody probably had a sign that says "Support the NRA." Somebody else probably had a sign about antiquated constitution, you know, in these modern times, whatever. It doesn't matter. Everybody was there for the same reason, but for some reason, this group, some people in the People for Social Justice, like I said, most of them are my friends, I've known them all my life, are driving a wedge, and that's the worst thing you can do in this type of a scenario. And I mean, the thing about brandishing a weapon is, if you take a weapon, and you point it, you threaten, you act like you're going to do something, you make sure somebody knows. Hey, you say that again, "I got a gun." You just got yourself in trouble. Walking down the street, whether that intimidates somebody or not, is a personal decision, just like if carrying a sign, "Ban AR-15s," doesn't bother me, but it may bother someone else, just like the sight of an AR-15 may bother someone else. But I guess in wrapping up what I'm getting at, this is Alpena, Michigan. There's nobody in Alpena, Michigan, should be afraid, irregardless of race, creed, religion, to go to any event. Maybe it escapes me, but I don't remember any violence at any of these events. And the stupid stuff with Confederate flags is generally high school kids, junior high kids, and I don't think when they fly it, or if they... I mean, I know there's some people even have them hanging on their front door. I don't think it's necessarily about racism. Some people look at that like Hank Williams Jr., the country western, saying, "Oh, I'm a rebel." There's a lot of reasons for it, but I guess the intent is in the eye of the beholder. But it would be nice if those intentions were based on some reality and some actuality and not innuendos and suspicion, because that's what's really divisive.
Thank you, Don. Anyone else to see here?
Oh, I'll make an announcement. Just an announcement for everybody here, and especially the press. The city is involved through NIMCOG on what is called a joint land use study of the two military bases, that's Camp Grayling and our CRTC. This is a project that is, one focused with the federal government and also the state through the National Guard. They do these all over the country where they look at their facilities and how they interact with the communities that they're in, in terms of things of land use, economic development, conflicts, areas of synergy, and so forth. And what is being done with NIMCOG as the host, the city, myself, the mayor's alternate, on the policy board, Adam Paul, our planning director, is on the technical committee, and they are going through that process. They've held a few public meetings. We had one here in Alpena, I'd say, last fall, I believe. They're having one this Thursday. There actually was one Wednesday in Grayling, on the Camp Grayling portion of the project, but here in the council chambers on Thursday at 6 o'clock, where there'll be display set up of the issues that have been generated and some of the recommendations that are coming out of this, and the idea... The purpose of the meeting is simply to get community input. So, the community, anybody is invited. We encourage you to attend, and would hope that the press would maybe put some additional advertisement for this out, and so that we will have a good turnout. Again, it will be here in council chambers at 6 o'clock. We do have on our web page, there's an announcement about this. You can always check that for some additional details, or if you have any questions, feel free to contact me as well. Thank you.
Greg?
It's close.
Not even close.
All right. Tonight's consent agenda is quite long, so bear with you, please. A is bills to be allowed in the amount of $385,972.92. B is the city charter reappointment of city assessor Jeff Shea, city attorney Bill Piper, and assistant city attorney Nancy Ward for two-year terms expiring 4/20/2020. C is the city charter reappointment of city clerk, treasurer, finance director Anna Soik for a two-year term and a salary increase to Step 2 that will remain in effect until D is the city council reappointment of Jim Clerich to the authority for Brownfield redevelopment for a three-year term expiring 4/1/2021. E is the city council appointment of Steve Wilson to the Harvard Advisory Committee for a three-year term expiring 4/1/2021. F is the city council appointment of Julie Krynyak to the retirement board for a two-year term expiring 4/1/2020. G is a mayoral reappointment of Aaron Boozer to the Downtown Development Authority for a four-year term expiring 4/1/2022. H is a transfer of a Class C liquor license with Sunday sales PM and obtainment of an SDM license for Pompeo's LLC to be located at 1120 State Avenue. I is the approval of summer movies by the bay and noise variances from 10 a.m. to 12 p.m. on May 25, June 15, and July 6. Alternate dates will be June 8, June 22, and July 27. And J is the approval of the Truth Tour to be held at Culligan Plaza on June 19, 2018.
I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Okay. Well, I think it's probably supposed to be 10 p.m. to 12 a.m., most likely for the movies.
Oh, yeah.
Just a minor correction, but so we get there.
Thank you. That's my bad.
Yeah. That's a good point. Thank you. And I guess just for clarification, and for the media, the Truth Tour is... That's being held by the Chamber of Commerce, so if you want any details on what that is, it's a Chamber of Commerce event. Contact them.
All right. Hess?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
And Walagora?
Hi.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Now down to proclamations. Today, I have the National Day of Prayer proclamation. Whereas Thursday, May 3, 2018, will mark the 67th consecutive observance of the National Day of Prayer, and millions of Americans will gather to honor God and pray on behalf of our nation, our leaders, our communities, our families, and our youth. Whereas across this nation, the steps of local government offices, city halls, community parks, and town squares will be filled with those in prayer, and whereas the Congress of the United States in 1952 enacted legislation setting aside a Day of Prayer for our nation, and on May 5, 1988, the 100th Congress of the United States passed a bill signed by President Ronald Reagan to provide for setting aside the first Thursday in May as the date on which the National Day of Prayer is celebrated, and whereas the theme for 2018, "Pray for America," unity, is based upon Ephesians 4:3, which challenges believers to mobilize unified public prayer for America, making every effort to keep the unity of the spirit through the bond of peace. And now therefore, I, Matthew J. Walagora, by the virtue of authority vested in me as the mayor of the City of Alpena, do hereby proclaim May 3, 2018, as the National Day of Prayer in Alpena, and encourage all area citizens to take part and be aware of this occasion in our community. I don't believe anyone from that organization is here. Okay. Next up is report of officers. A is the 2017 annual monitoring report.
Currently, we have five companies that are receiving tax abatements. They're Alro Steel, Dean Arbor Ford, Duville Johnson, which is also known as Magnoloy, Alpena Lodging, which is the Holiday Inn, and David Nishaw's building, which was most recently occupied by the Blue Squirrel.
That's the one that... You had the liquor license.
Right. Which is now Pompeo's. These companies report annually their total capital investment and their current employment level. Four of the five companies have exceeded their capital investments, but Alpena Lodging fell short by $2.7 million. In regards to the employment, Alro Steel, Dean Arbor Ford, and Alpena Lodging have met or exceeded their projections. Duville Johnson has one and a half employees less than they had originally anticipated, and as of the time of the report, David Nishaw didn't have any employees due to the restaurant's closing. But now that Pompeo's opened last week, that will be included in next year's report, so we'll find out then. So collectively, these five companies represent $9,866,000 in capital investments and are employing 72 people.
Unless there's any questions, just a receipt and file.
I move to receive and file. Second.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Walagora?
Yes.
And Hess?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. And next is the city treasurer's quarterly financial report, January 1, 2018, to March 31, 2018.
So as of March 31, 2018, we should be about 75% of our budget. For revenue, we've received 78.46%, and expenditures are at just over 70%. I did notice an error when I was looking at this report this morning. In the green section on the right, the revenue, where it says "City Hall," on the first line, that should actually be "General," and the next one down is "City Hall." So, for revenues, the general line is a little bit high, at 92%, but that's because we've received the majority of our tax money. IT revenue is low due to a software change, which resulted in lower expense to our department, so that meant lower revenue in the IT department. The police revenue is down a little bit because of a federal grant that hasn't been received yet, but we do expect to get a portion of it still in this fiscal year. Ambulance revenue's a little behind, but we did receive reassurance from our biller that we are on track to hit our projected number. The lights fund revenue is high, but that's due to a timing of a reimbursement. It was just a one-time thing, and so that set that number a little bit higher. The parks and rec fund revenue is really low because we haven't received state grant money and donations for the splash park. money and donations for the splash park. Going down to the expenditures, cemetery expenses are a little high at this point due to summer help last summer. Public works expenditures are high because of the way that the benefits get charged out on a quarterly basis. So some of the expenses, it's just a one-time thing, but then they get charged out quarterly based on where the employees work in DPW. Parks and rec expenditures are low because the majority of the work on the splash park hasn't happened yet. Overall, for the third quarter, we're doing well. We're actually projecting to be just a smidge in the black and not in the red as projected when the budget was approved. I think we're doing really well.
The biggest question right now, and Rich is getting a report, is the impact of this weekend's weather on our current budget in terms of overtime and equipment. So we'll have a report here in the next day or two, we'll, you know, slip those numbers in and see what, you know, what that does. Obviously, it will, right now, we think we're a bit on the plus side, but that will slip that down a bit.
No questions, that's a receipt and file as well.
I make a motion for receipt and file.
Second. Nielsen?
Yes.
Walagora?
Aye.
Hess?
Yes.
And Johnson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Next up, we have a communication and petition. This is the here in undercover narcotics team, informational report and budget request.
Good evening. Detective Lieutenant Stewart Sherk with the here on undercover narcotics team, and I'm here for my annual pilgrimage for funding and support of an officer from Alpena City. Really, just quite simply, I want to put that we're in dire straits as a country with the opioid epidemic, and it's very prominent here in Alpena. We noticed a trend in 2017 where cocaine has risen to be one of the most pursued or sought-after drugs, which eclipsed heroin, which had been our previous problem. More importantly, opioid pill diversion skyrocketed. So when we put our efforts into heroin, the illegal sales of heroin, the street use, we have the trend that goes back into the opioids, and then it cycles again. With that trend and the amount of deaths, I mean, we're talking 50,000 deaths in the United States just from opioid abuse, it's a tragedy. If we can prevent one death in our area, that's, to me, is a good effort. The complexity of our investigations has increased with methamphetamine laboratories, and we had nine last year, three of which were in the city of Alpena. They're very time-intensive, very expensive for us to investigate. We used about 41% of our resources in the city of Alpena. The next highest was 42% in the county of Alpena. And that goes off to the other three participating counties, I guess respectively, because most of our effort is put into where most of the people are, and most of the people are within the city. So this year's request, again, is the support of an officer, and fiscal year 2019 is $12,500. Now, if I put that in perspective, I believe 2016 was $15,252, and I was able to write a grant that increased for 2018 by $25,000. We obtained Preskill County as a participating financial member again. I believe we have the support of Rogers City. Everybody's coming on board, so last year, the cost borne for the city of Alpena was $8,000. So, my intent is to maintain that level at around $8,000, but it would depend on how crafty I am with my grant application and the participation of the other entities. So my request, again, is for $12,500, but the anticipation is much less at this point. I provided a copy of the 2017 annual report, and I know you've had no time to look it over. I could talk far too long, so I'm going to end it at that and await any questions.
I don't have any questions. Granted, we just got this and that's fine, but we're not making a decision on that, asserting that today, so. Does anybody have any questions for Stuart, I see. Thank you very much, sir.
Do you want to receive and file?
Yes, please.
I make a motion for receipt and file.
Second. Walagora?
Aye.
Hess?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
And Nielsen?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, next is unfinished business, assigned regulation ordinance, second reading and council action.
Consistent with council policy, I would not read this unless you requested me to do so. There were just a couple of minor changes, there were a couple of typos that were pointed out at first reading, and then the one specific change was the, I may not be able to find it now, what the figure is, but. It is, I want to say 4.3A, yeah, 4.3, I'm sorry, 4.3A1 residential uses, signs shall not exceed four feet, and then if home occupation is present in the lot, one sign shall not exceed four square feet. That was originally written as eight square feet, and that was changed at council request at first reading. And then there was a couple other typos. If you know what they are, you can go ahead and tell us.
I don't remember.
Other than that, it's consistent with, I believe, what Adam had presented a couple of meetings ago, and so we just need a vote, up or down.
Any questions or further comments on it?
I move we adopt ordinance number 18-440.
Second. Hess?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
And Walagora?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Bill and Adam. Next up is new business, this is the bid on the dog park fence at North Riverfront Park. Before Rich starts, I will request to abstain, as I am the owner of Sunrise Fencing LLC, which was one of the bidders.
Do we need a motion?
Yeah. Someone would like to move to abstain, please.
I move to allow the mayor to abstain. Second.
Sorry, I can't write very fast.
That's okay.
All right, Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Walagora?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Of course I'm.
Hess?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Rich, please.
Over the past year, the city's been working with community partners to develop an off-leash dog park within the North Riverfront Park. Community partners collaborating with the MDC and community fundraising have accumulated approximately $20,880 to fund the construction of this project. As this development is repurposed, the fence portion of the project fell under the city purchasing policy and was competitively bid. In an effort to construct a visually appealing facility, the city of Alpena requested pricing for both a black vinyl coated chain link fence and post system, and then we also requested an alternate pricing for a decorative aluminum picket fence, looked like a wrought iron style fence. On Tuesday, July 11th, 2017, the city of Alpena opened the bids from the following four contractors, and the bids are as recited there. Because of the prominent location of the proposed dog park along the riverfront within the downtown, excuse me, district, staff feel it is the city's best interest to pursue installing the more aesthetic decorative aluminum fence. Due to the delays caused by the waterfront deck failure, and we were all set to get this to council when we first opened the bids, but yeah, had a little issue there, was not, the project was not awarded at the time of the bid opening. We have contacted Todd Britton of Meridian Contracting to confirm that Meridian Contracting would still honor their bid. Even though there has been an increase in material costs of approximately $200, Mr. Britton stated that Meridian Contracting would still construct the project at their bid price of $26,972. During the spring budgeting process, and this will be presented at the next meeting, funding was established to build the dog park with the decorative fence. It is my recommendation the city engineer that city council award the North Riverfront Dog Park Fence to Meridian Contracting for the base bid of $26,972. And right now, we're on task to have the shoreline work completed by June 30th. Actually, we think it may be ahead of that, but that is the completion date for that. And we've actually been working with MacArthur, who's doing the shoreline work. They're not going to do restoration until, I mean, if this fence project is awarded, they won't do the restoration, they'll let Todd get in there, do his work, and then they'll restore it all at once. There may actually maybe some cost savings, but the two of them working together. And Meridian is working with MacArthur on that North Riverfront Park project anyway, so it's a good synergy between those two.
Excellent. I have a question.
Yeah.
In the $26,972, is actually the alternate bid, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, I saw it, because.
Yeah, it was the alternate bid. The low bid, if we went with just the basic chain length, black coated chain length fence, was with Nationwide Construction Group out of Chesterfield at $19,555. But like I said, for about the $8,000 more, we can get a lot more aesthetically pleasing fence, and that was a decision by staff that that's what we really wanted to pursue.
Okay, so the bid is for the alternate, more decorative aluminum fence, okay, great.
Good.
And I don't think the mayor at the time owned, at the time of the bids owned Sunrise I found somebody.
I didn't have.
I move that we award the bid to Meridian Contracting for the fence in the amount of $26,972.
Second. Nielsen?
Yes.
Hess?
Yes.
And Johnson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, thank you, Rich. Next up is adjourned.
I move we adjourn to close session to discuss water and sewage.
Second. Okay, Walagora?
Aye.
Hess?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
And Nielsen?
Yes.